Beginning of the month, meeting. Beginning of the month, meeting for the month of September.
Make decisions and consider those names that are pleasing to the people that we serve. Those names that are pleasing to the people that we serve. Father, we pray that once our business is over, that you give us traveling grace. Father, we pray that once our business is over, that you give us traveling grace to find out.
About nine thirty, we'll see if we can get up and leave and supervise little with continuing conducting the meeting out down another engagement. I'll just give you all the heads up when we see we can get up and leave. But at this moment, we're going to go ahead and enter into our citizens' comment period. This is a period that any citizen can come before the board for up to three minutes and discuss an issue that you might have some concern about without being in our citizens' comment period.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Marvella Mullins. And, uh, well, I'm disabled. And I was, um, I'm here to tell you, uh, it's, it's, it's the road, it's the road. I have, uh, if there's any way, if there's any way that I could actually have that road, uh, paved so I can walk, so that we can go down the road. And this is just a joke. And a friend had come to my house and she saw my dog. And when she saw my dog, because my dog is dead. She said, my dog got, has a pretty dog beat this thing just like I do. And I said, I can't walk her. I said, I can't walk her because I got a mule, but she's scared of, she's scared of anything loud. And so I can't just walk her. And then I can't last long enough to walk without my walker or something to hold on to. So that's my, that's what I have on my, I, I just need a way of, and then the rocks is so thick and it's just so thick. And then they always get washed off when, um, it rains and stuff. So I don't know, that, that road, we always had a problem with that road. And I was just hoping maybe that picture, okay, here's one picture right here. You know, we talked and you were telling me about the guy.
Yeah.
This is what she made about washed out the road.
If you don't mind, could you state your name?
I'm sorry.
No, 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 no. Go ahead.
I'm Doug DeBran.
Okay.
Me and Mr. Williams have talked.
Okay.
And this is one side of the road where they just washed off on the road. This is a ditch and they dug them out. They dug them so far, see how the water stopped and just sit there? And just sit there and I just kept pictures. Remember it flooded and I call you this Sunday that it flooded.
Right.
See all of this washed in the ditch, all, all of this goes from this side to the ditch. This is the other side that don't have the ditch on there. See all that, that, that's blocking all that water. See, we talked and you didn't ever see the pictures.
Yes, ma'am.
And just see that when the flood started that Sunday and all of that from that house all the way back to my house.
That's a bad flood.
Yeah.
That's a bad flood. I'm, I'm glad I road managed and thank that. Could you show him these pictures before you leave? Before you leave, show him these pictures.
Yep. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion passes unanimously. Would there be anyone else that would like to approach the board for up to three minutes? If not, we will consider this portion of our agenda now closed. Okay, next on, on, on the agenda, we're going to handle one item and then we'll get back on, on track. Uh, the approval of the twenty twenty-five, August twenty twenty-five board minutes. Can I get a motion to approve? Motion by supervisor trainer, second by supervisor Williams. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, motion passes unanimously. And now we are, we will hear from OSERS, Ms. Karen Mossery. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you. As Marvell said, I'm Karen Mossery and I'm chair of the OSERS board. And thank you for giving me this opportunity to be on the board. First and foremost, I want to thank you for the support that you've given for the past years. And just a little brief overview, OSERS was created in twenty ten after the then board of the American Red Cross decided to disaffiliate with the citizens of October County with a local organization. And I'd like to give a special shout out to Marvell and Orlando for their patience and their encouragement and their listening ear back during those times. Second, I would like to share with you a little of what OSERS has done since twenty fifteen, which has been later, not fifteen years. We have provided direct assistance to two hundred and ninety-four families representing one thousand twenty-six individuals that are impacted by disaster. We have certified one thousand five hundred and twenty-one individuals in CPR, BLS, and our first aid. And since twenty nineteen, which unfortunately was the first time I had really good data, we have collected eight hundred and forty-seven units of blood. Those blood units could possibly have saved two thousand five hundred and forty-one lives. Now let me put it in perspective. Mr. Carpenter, I understand you. Um, we have provided direct assistance to almost two percent of the total October County population. We have certified almost three percent of the total October County population. Now granted, some of those might be repeat, so it might be a little bit exaggerated. Just since twenty nineteen, we have collected enough blood, blood units to have impacted almost five percent of the county population. Now, in addition to these important activities, OSERS has worked hard to be an active part of our community. We have provided water at the Memorial Day celebration every year that they, it's been held since we've been in existence. We had first aid stations at the Garden Expo and the Relay for Life back when they had it. And we partner with other organizations as well as the schools in all kinds of events such as Starpool in the Spotlight, MLK Volunteer Day, Veterans Program, programs both on campus and in the community, National Night Out, Community Resource, EMAs October County Triad Senior Picnic, Starpool, October School District's Discovery Center Health and Child Disparers. And we did a first aid at Starpool, Durban. We have also been on site when our neighboring counties have needed help. We sent teams to Smithland and Winston County after the April twenty eleven tornadoes, to Lewisville after the April twenty fourteen tornado. And in addition, we sent twenty truckloads of materials to Lewisville. And we collected money for Amory after their March twenty twenty-three tornado. Now I will say that all of this assistance was provided completely with money that was earmarked for those disasters. We, we say that you give to OSERS and it stays to serve your neighbors. And so that's true. One activity I'd like to share with you though, just before Christmas twenty twenty-four, you may remember the apartment fair was filed in South Bend, Gomri. Rendered thirty-two individuals temporarily homeless. We were immediately contacted by EMA and we provided temporary housing for them. We then worked with Kristen and other organizations to move them from that location to another so that a few of the families had to end up staying there all the way to Christmas. We helped collect food, we helped collect, uh, gifts and clothes. And Kristen even scheduled a parade and a visit from San Antonio. So we were very proud of that. We coined a slogan in twenty-ten that said, neighbors helping neighbors. And we have tried to live up to this everyday sense. Now, you know that at some point Orlando, she was going to get the full arrival. I'm coming to respectfully ask that you increase our annual reward, which has been ten thousand, and we ask you to increase it to twenty, which by the way, was the amount that the Board of Supervisors given to American Red Cross back in twenty-ten. Then if I could have a PSA, we're having a blood drive on September tenth where we're honoring our first responders. So we wish you, it's a contest and the one that gets the most votes, it's a monetary prize and there's lots of competition. So we will ask you to give and to share the information. And if you have any questions for the athlete, let it in.
Yes, first of all, do you have anybody with you?
Oh, yes, I have, I have our Director of Operations, Candy Creasy. Good morning.
Good morning. Well, listen, I, I, again, I certainly appreciate everything. I've actually called a couple of times for some individuals that was in need and you all responded right away and helped those individuals. It's been great. It's been absolutely great for October County because when that announcement came out that Red Cross was going to disengage, uh, you all stepped up and said, listen, let's take care of our community. And, and it's been wonderful. It really has. Appreciate everything.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service.
Yes.
I make the most of my acknowledging important. Motion by supervisor trainer, second by supervisor Williams. Uh, any discussion? All in favor? Motion passes unanimously.
Okay? Next on the agenda, we have our youth court judge, Judge Leanne Turner. Good morning.
Good morning, thank y'all. Appreciate the time. We, we actually have a couple of agenda items that, um, we'd like to address with you. The first one, um, is approval of the continuing agreement with the Mississippi State University Psychology Department. Um, they're doctoral level students, consult with our court and our agencies. And this, um, agreement just allows citizens to continue to work with us under the existing agreement. Um, they do lots of wonderful programs for us. Um, one of them is a two-for-two program where a child comes into custody. Um, the youth court has gotten donations of books and we give the same books to the placement family and to the, um, natural parents. And then they can waste time and they'll call and read the books with the children in their placement home. And it obviously promotes literacy, but it also helps maintain the connection between the parents and the child by having a regular activity they do every day. Um, but basically they, um, consult, um, they sometimes will come and observe from work. And when they do, they, you know, help give us, um, you know, kind of direction. If they see that multiple programs are being suggested, um, by Child Protection Services, they'll say, hey, this really should be done in a certain order. You know, so they give us really good, it's, we're just asking you to continue this program.
Would you make a mark on what's for approval to continue the relationship with Mississippi State University Psychology Department? Motion by supervisor Williams, second by supervisor Carpenter. Uh, any other discussion? And this is, we're at ten thousand, you still have ten thousand of our credit? Suffice for anything this year?
Yes, it's not. Yes. It has been in place with the one ten thousand dollar payment from back in twenty twenty-one.
Any other discussion?
No.
We, we have a credit, GM. We have.
We have a credit. So, so just how long do you think this credit will hold you?
I'm hoping for, up until here, a long time. Um, they don't fill it unless they have to use it for a graduate student who's using time outside of their normal graduate section that they are, are doing at the university.
Judge, explain to them that, that the reason the money, I think one of the questions they could ask is why is the money still there?
Yes.
So the money's still there because there's another pot that you're using first? Is that fair to say? Or at least it's outside?
The university is providing the funds for the program other than when they have a little, a whole overflow, when they say, okay, we, this student worked so many hours this week and they did two additional hours through the youth court program. So that's the, the, the pay. The majority of their payments come from their, their, um, assistantships, um, for their graduate studies.
Any other discussion? Not all in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Okay?
Secondly, um, if you recall back in January, you guys authorized me to apply for a grant for the Mississippi Department of Public Safety, entitled to, um, sub-grant, um, assisting with delinquency prevention. Um, and I'm very happy and proud to say we were one of three county courts or three youth courts in the state that were awarded grants. We were awarded thirty-two thousand two hundred and ninety-five dollars, um, for, uh, to hire a part-time person for approximately a year to assist with our families who are in, um, delinquency cases, helping them, kind of like coaching them on, hey, this is what the courts are trying to do. Here's a reminder of your appointment. They're followed up with, um, providing assistance, helping to locate therapists, manual therapy type programs for these families to help assist them. Um, just because let's say a child has done a delinquency, who come into court, that's just the tip of the iceberg for the most part. The families have a lot of issues, um, themselves. And so this, this one-year grant is to help those families find resources to get them connected to them and help them problem solve, to keep their, their child out of court. But this is the, uh, this is the packet, um, for approval.
Your request, motion, motion by supervisor trainer, second by supervisor Carpenter. Uh, any further discussion? Not all in favor? Motion passes unanimously.
This is the, this is not a big sum.
You leave me those, I'll get them signed and get them back to you.
What was the motion for? Was it a motion to one team?
We've already applied, correct? We're just accepting it.
We've been approved, this is the acceptance.
Yeah.
Yes. I was on the bench, so she hadn't been, yeah.
There's our matching dollars.
No, sir. This is a hundred percent money that comes in and nothing is required. No. We don't let that get close enough.
Chirping, happy chirping out of the town's, too.
It's a federal sub-grant. The federal funds came into the state Department of Public Safety and then they had to then get applications and then distribute it out there. This is the third year in a row that we've been great at one. So I'm very excited and happy that they're sticking with us.
Did you get a copy of that?
Thank you all very much.
Okay, okay. Thank you so much. I was wondering if you were floating around.
Okay.
And I'm, I'm going to get you a sign. Okay, thanks, Judge. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Before we get to this, um, well, you want to come up and introduce yourself? Although this is one of our liaison, he missed some time up here.
Okay, okay. Come on up. Thank you all, thank you all so much.
I want you to introduce yourself. This is one of our liaison this morning.
Okay.
We met last weekend.
Yes, I'm, I'm sorry. I meant to get here a little earlier, but it's been more than those mornings. Um, you know, I just wanted to introduce myself. My name is Blake Neely. I serve as field representative for Senator Sidney Hightsmith's office. Um, I'm based here in North Mississippi. I live in Oxford, um, where our office is. So Starpool is the bottom of my territory, but I cover essentially everything north of eighty-two. So it's a good little sized area, but I try to be around as much as I can. And my role as field representative, I'm here to essentially be your liaison to the senator. If you ever have any questions, um, with the federal government or with the senator herself, I'm always happy to do my best to answer those. Uh, if you need help with federal grants or any other federal resources, I'm also a resource for you to help answer those questions as well. So I just want to make sure that y'all know who I am. If there is anything, uh, that you ever need me for, you can call, text, email, whichever you prefer, I try to be around as much as I can.
You got a problem?
I do. Thank you very much. We helped start some of that, so, um, I'm, progress is good. All right, but I appreciate y'all letting me speak this morning and just anything that I can. Yes, I do. But if there's anything that I can ever assist y'all with, any, any projects y'all are working on in the county, just please feel free to reach out anytime. I know Senator Love's coming up here. We actually had her and the, um, Secretary of Agriculture here last week, um, to do a visit in Mississippi State, so that went really well. So she likes it up here.
She likes it better than Oxford, don't you?
So. As the, as the oldest Oxford guy in, uh, Starpool, Mississippi, no, she does not. She actually does prefer Starpool much more than, uh, than Oxford, so. I know, but when it's a, when it's a capitol-level official, they like to keep it a little bit more, the capitol-level official, they like to keep it a little bit more lesser, lesser people in the know just because it ma, it makes for a little bit less of a space. It just, it was trying to be a in and out.
You can give it to them if you can get them. Mr. Carpenter, yeah, and then just send that anything to board.
Yeah, absolutely. And next time that we have her up here, I want to make sure that she gets to talk to y'all as well, so, but otherwise, that's, that's all I have. Appreciate y'all letting me speak.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Neely for, for coming and speaking this morning. Looking forward to working with you.
Absolutely.
We're going to, uh, ask the supervisor little will, will come up and assume. I, I've got to leave.
Motion, motion by?
Yes, sir. Thank you, supervisor Williams. Second, motion by supervisor Williams, second by supervisor, uh, trainer to.
A couple of boxes going in our time. Expedite as much as I can. First of all, these were emailed out, I believe, last week and they're pencil updates. But we produced a spreadsheet with all the roadway estimates and we know right now. You'll see several on there, two or three times with dates beside them, what we looked to there, number, and you have comments about why is it this much now or that much then? I'm happy to address those, to know what you've commented on. I've made ten copies. They were updated as recently as this morning. It reflects a few roads that some of y'all have asked about that we were able to get done last week. Next on my list, we have Ballard, Clifford, and George ready to advertise. A question for you, supervisor trainer, presumably, would you like to advertise those as a group, which is where we got them together?
Yes.
Or individually?
As a group.
As a group.
As a group, because you're talking about total mileage and all those roads.
Correct.
Oh, it's where you're talking about Ballard and Clifford.
Ballard, Clifford, and George, know the three pretty sure.
There's actually planned total mileage with this home across on San Antonio.
In that far.
We will get with the papers and establish a bid date today.
Make a motion, we can, uh, advertise those three roads.
It's been motion by supervisor, uh, trainer, second by supervisor Williams to advertise, we just.
Ballard, Lane, Clifford.
Um, all of them.
Are the, the estimates on this sheet are for the work that you're talking about advertising?
They're in there.
They're on there, but of course, uh, the advertising.
It, it, it depends on how the bids come in. It may be a different.
We, we did estimates for a bunch of roads in District Two and approached some of them out and get them all ready. And these three, we set aside to bid together because it was similar in terms of work. Okay, I have for you subcontract agreements, SAP fifty-three twenty-one S, which was more high road. These are subcontracted group.
The listed roads.
That's more high.
This is SAP fifty-three twenty-one S more high. Y'all have already noted the board contract. These are just the state aid subcontract. So with that said, Ms. Sheriff, I've tagged where we need the proof of signature and I'll need your stamp on those. And signature whenever they're available, if you'll just let me know. It's like ten or twelve copies.
Can we give them to my son?
Well, we'll need your sign. And then I, I will need your stamp. Black Jack Road East, we had a notice of award on it. I received bonds and insurance following those. I think I sent those to you by email, but I didn't know. I mean, permission to issue notice to proceed. Murphy paid in Black Jack and Bluff Lake five cents. So I need to know whether you'd like to hold that or exceed that to any order or how to.
Motion, second.
I don't, I'm not certain you have the money supervisor on the, in the budget I'd like.
Those are fine. Yeah, including, um, I have, I have Bluff Lake, Williams, and Black Jack added up there. And really less than that because we took out defense force on Black Jack.
There will be some reduction in the.
Some reduction in defense.
All right, you're going from where to where the change order will be for Black Jack two?
Essentially from Bardwell Road and the church. Now the change order will be Bluff Lake Road.
So we need to have the change orders in Bluff Lake.
Change order is to overlay Bluff Lake Road. And that goes from the end of Octop.
What, what are we talking about? Approving Black Jack and Bluff Lake, right?
Black Jack.
Black Jack is already.
Black Jack is approved. I'm asking whether or not you want to approve a change order to the Black Jack project to add Bluff Lake Roads in an amount of two-hundred-and-twenty-eight thousand, six-hundred-and-thirty dollars and five cents.
Where did that come from?
That comes out of.
Are they both in the same district?
Quot to do Bluff Lake Road.
That was eight nineteen and another one four twenty-three.
Those are estimates. This is the actual price from Murphy paid in to do Bluff Lake Road.
I still got about at least eight hundred thousand. Cause that, that doesn't include, uh, four-year role playing money, yearly four-year role playing money. You only added up, uh, bond money. You're not adding up.
Four-year road playing money, it comes annually and you don't have that. I mean, you can't count it ahead. You get two hundred thousand a year. If you approve this. You got enough, you got enough for Bluff Lake and Black Jack, but I don't know that you have enough for Williams.
Not Williams. We're talking about Williams. Williams already been, uh, been funded. Williams is not up here. We're just only talking about now Black Jack and Bluff Lake. That's the only thing we're talking about.
You have a little bit of time. If you approve this this morning, I'm going.
We have time to, uh, that's based on funding, but we do have time because those are the same, that's the same contractor that's going to be doing.
Same contractor. If you approve it this morning, I'll prepare a change order, bring it back. You'll have to sign the change order.
Okay. And that'll give us a little bit of time just to double check everything. I apologize for not being ready if I'd have known what you.
So I'll prepare a change order to add Bluff Lake Road to the Black Jack contract. And I'll bring it back.
That's right. Same contract.
We left award of District Two Road.
Motion, motion for approval based on addition of.
Yeah, motion by supervisor Williams, you second by trainer. All those in favor?
All right. We left on the table last time the award to Pittman Construction for District Two Roads.
I want to make a motion. We go ahead and award that contract to Pittman Construction. And here is my approach to that. I know we're going to keep everything that we're trying to do under the two million, whatever we got allotted in our fund. So what Mr. Platt and myself will have to do, we're going to have to go back and, and, and make an adjustment on what we got. We're going to do a change order. And once we do the change order, and we've already talked to Pittman, they're, they're willing to work with us, we'll do the change order. Because what I'm going to have to do, I'm going to have to back out the, the allocation of dollars for Clifford, Jordan, and Ballard and leave that money set aside. So once you get those figured, we have that money to go with that. And then we'll do, uh, out of the balance of that, I think it'll be nine eighty-nine, seven ninety-one. And then we'll select a few roads off of this list minus the engineering cost. And then I also want to keep aside about two hundred thousand dollars that I'm working on, on Cannon Road two. So everything will be, everything that we're doing will be under the two million as I have allotted. That's my motion.
So we're going to have to, we're going to have to accept the, is we're going to have to do some change orders to get it inside the, the budgetary.
Let's see.
So we have a motion by supervisor trainer for the approving, awarding the contracts to Pittman Contractors for District Two Roads.
District Two Roads.
District Two Roads. Okay, we're not going to put them in. All those in favor?
I'll, I'll just add too, while you're figuring the money out for the actual work matter of term, we can also change order town. So if the contractor is willing to say, hey, I don't understand. You don't want to do all this right now, but I'll be okay at this Friday. Next Friday. You, you may have an opportunity.
But he locked himself in for a year out.
I, I, I can't answer that. I'm just saying there's an opportunity to suspend work and put work back in the June.
We just, we, we approaching this kind of non-traditional. That's, that's all we're going to get paid.
A change order can be for town or not in.
It's a different way to say it.
All right. Other than that, I would land it on the fourth being this Thursday. We've gone accept it. It's here for Rock Hill East and for Maven Vale Road. On the twenty-fifth this morning, we're going to accept.
Yes, we'll open the bids and then you'll work them. I got you.
Ten, we, uh, T light is a ten. And on the fourth, we have Rock Hill and Maven Vale and T and ten thirty.
I was thinking we already, we could did, we had the other side play the same. Reclaiming. Oh, we bid it in twenty twenty-two, but we.
We bid it and did not award.
Well, I just want to confess I ain't been that way. I guess y'all said you've been out there, you know, but, but. I thought we, I thought it was already in.
The last time we did work on Maven Vale was carryover final back in each one.
Name those again. Rock Hill, Maven Vale is which one flat? Rock Hill, Maven Vale is which one?
Rock Hill and Maven Vale bid on the fourth of this Thursday. You like bids on the twenty-fifth.
It looks like that, where does that go out to?
I think it's closer to seven one all that.
Where does that go out to?
Starts at the city limits and then. Gosh.
Go to six point three. What about, um, all those bad, bad calls that we can.
It's prepared and traveling and then, and then it'll be.
That's all.
Well, when we say saw, nothing really goes saw, except getting the trees out there and I know where our trees are. So it may be some conversation on the twentieth before they're started. Trying to get something or not. So the man, supervisor, the one I gave you estimates for three roads, you give them loads.
Yeah, they're on the. Yeah, they're on here. Yeah, I was just wondering if you got, um, would be able to, um, get that stuff, um, sent over and answer any of the questions.
Did you, uh, and, uh, did you buy any chance to do a tally of this whole sheet of the value of road work on this sheet? Can you, can you, can you, uh, can you just estimate how much it is?
How would you like to do? Some of these are actually bid.
Well, you don't have to do it now, but then you can work on it. So we'll see the value, the value.
You want to take out the roads we've already bid?
Right, take out the one we already done. We already got those. We, we, well, take out, take out the one we already paid for. That we completed and paid for. Okay, well, you can add them all up.
We've got some that are bid.
Right, so they can, they gotta be paid for. So we just.
I'll leave them in there and.
Irregardless of where they fall in the calendar, because these are all calendar. And I just, that way the public can see the amount of need that throughout the entire calendar.
I'll take the roads that we have bid for, you can set it on the month. We've not bid it, I got this one, you can set it over and I'll give you the.
Permission, you just put this, I mean, what, uh, supervisor, this, to have this, one, two, three, four, five.
You want me to break them up by this?
No, just when you do it. So I mean, I don't know where some of these are going to go.
You won't have to break them up.
Yeah, this is.
We don't know where some of them are.
What we doing?
And you got some happening. Any other questions for me? Yeah, and keep in mind, this sheet right here is our estimate at the time. If we group some of these or don't group them or whatever, we'll get a little bit of profit.
We got a good bid on that, on that road.
How much did the lights broke in? I can't even say.
Well, it came back at nine eighty-three, six seventy-six. We got a good bid, total bid for the whole project because the, uh, between the highest building and the lowest building, about half a million.
And to that point, I'll remind you, I shared this last week, I called Pittman to make sure they were okay, but they're not because they were nothing that happened and all of it. Look, they can double check, confirm that they were, confirm that they want to do the work. I shared that we may have to deduct some roads or not do some roads. And they indicated that we go and work those same roads. First thing I do is give them an open source, have somebody to bond, somebody to get the bonds down. Any other questions for me this time? It does seem like, but whatever the more we can group work right now, the better it's going to work. And I actually talked to, I don't want to say an A pack this morning about potential upcoming work. Asked him that very question. If you have, would you rather have three, two million dollars down? Or six million dollars down? They'd rather have the chance.
Getting back to the roads, Ballard, Jordan, Clifford, I know I saw one, can we do them both?
I got to build them one way or the other, but it won't take them much if you want to build them in the middle.
Bid them in the bid. And the strategy is, is that, you know, sometimes when you build them all together, you know, you come at the disposal of one contractor. But if you got three contractors out there, you can still have some work going on. And then one contractor won't hold up the whole job. They might think.
What I came through is a lot of advertising out there. And then renege on it because another bidder will say, well, if I don't know you weren't going to do that move, I'd be indifferent.
So I want to just tell them everything that I want to do and that I've done, thinking about them. And you bid it that way. And then let me decide what I'm going to do once I get bid.
So we will bid Clifford, Jordan, and Ballard as separate. So you could potentially have three different contractors.
Good.
Or two. That's one.
We, we did talk about some possibility of new construction. I guess we need to follow up with some conversation on that. Possibility of new construction with Pittman, why they're here on that contract, a change order.
We have looked.
To new construction.
We have looked at, uh, you asked about lane line. We've looked at that. Don't have the numbers yet. We looked at it Thursday or Friday. I just simply don't have that.
And that was daily.
You asked about that. They talked about that. No, you just got a long section in there that's going on the water. The pipes are way on the side. Pipe's well on the sides. It's a very big drainage area. If you're looking at a, uh, an extra large, probably to raise roadway up with drainage structures or it could be a potential dissection down over there, getting out of bottom on the steel. Probably be cheap and fix security. So that's some discussion. It's not a simple thing.
I talked to Victor about it. He told me it's a project.
It's a project. It's a project. But it, it, it may be a case. And there are a few of these down the stretch where the road is named Big Blue. Out of the bottom.
Well, I've been seeing the pictures of the flooded road.
I actually, I rode it. It was three of them. Six of them sat down in the garden. I had to work floods and now we were all on the same page. But it's, it's not an easy thing. This would be.
When we want to move, we're not over that part of the bid process.
It would be first from right away acquisition and then going to the bidding.
Back then, I've got, I at least don't know how to get them. Um, the other one I'm looking for is all down any traffic. So you know, I'll talk.
And just for the board's information, anytime we're working on these boxes and bridges, I'm doing everything I possibly can.
Um, we need a motion. Um, we need a motion to acknowledge the county's change of support. Motion by supervisor carp, second by supervisor trainer. Alpha Baker. Is that again? That's again. Next, we have our road manager. Mr. Pitt the Collins.
Morning. First, we got, uh, road manager board.
Make a motion to approve road manager board.
Uh, and.
We got a motion by supervisor trainer.
After A shop, that way they don't have to come all the way to Central Shop.
Always stop by there and wait, wait just in.
Yeah, these things were a hundred and twenty-five dollars a piece. That's sound right there. There's quite a few of my things delivering that, that bad money.
So since you mentioned that, so our allotment now, we went up on our allotment, right?
We bought, uh, we, I keep, I don't remember all the details, but yes, we bought additional two kennels.
Okay. And our allotment, that last one, October to October event?
Reordering.
So we, we'll reorder some new kennels in October, plus twenty-five, twenty-six.
We have enough to get back there? We, we should. This is, is.
Uh, we, we should, this is, it's pushing it forward, but we should. Uh, next, I have a, uh, driveway entrance for, this is, uh, Nina Kane at five one two two old West Point Road, she's asking for, to put in the driveway and.
So.
Wait, um, we got a motion back of the train or old West Point Road for access to property. Is that bound to the strip? Um, all over the Baker?
What was that name again, Vic? Nina Kane. N A, N A Kane. C A, N A. Okay, uh, last thing I got on, on the, I've got some, uh, we, we looked far near for bridge labs. For, to repair the bridge on Sanders Road. Wasn't able to find any use. So we had to go back and try to find someone to build this on. Uh, found two builders, J.J. Ferguson and, uh, Design Precast and Pipe, uh, with J.J. Ferguson is located in, uh, Greenwood. Design Precast and Pipe is located in Gumpford. Uh, we got bids from Buffalo and.
Oh, but they stay on, oh, but they stay on, they're bidding on. And we're having to, um, Tom, thank you guys for the hand, so there's not going to be labor involved.
Victor, you're not asking us to, to vote on this today, correct?
Well, I, I just need approval to purchase. And, uh, because.
You're just making sure that now it's going to be probably the homework that I see is.
Well, let me explain, on the J.J. Ferguson bid, it, it's not a total on here, but it came out to be forty-four thousand. We have one two million bridge labs on that, they did sixty, only five, so we're looking at about forty-five hundred, comes to about thirty-nine thousand.
Seven thirty-seven.
Yeah, and the other one, well, it's, it's something they didn't do on that. They didn't add in the spacer posts, and they didn't add in the pads. So we're gonna, that bid is gonna increase. So when, at the total, they're gonna be pretty well neck and neck. And what I just need you all to authorize me to use the best and lowest bid to purchase. To get these done, because.
Nick and I hold off, but if it's in this neighborhood, we gonna, we gonna pull the trigger.
Um, all of the Baker, all of the Baker. That's on top of. That's on top of.
Oh, yes, it, it gives, it gives the road a lot of structural strength.
Yeah, that's right.
I mean, you can, once that stuff lays for about two days and cool, it's, it, the strength comes to it.
With that's grand.
Yeah, we got, we, they doing that today, they actually, we got saw and cement trucks down, and we'll mix. So we gonna try to get that done and level out there. So we gonna try to get that done and level out there as well.
Right now, we are going to bridge move.
Yes. Well, and booting road.
Okay, yes, 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 yes. Victor, this is the, is this the spot that the gentleman had the, the side road that the old gravel found? He was concerned about making sure that it was cleaned up back up there, just, if it's true, I'm thinking that the same person. You take care of business out there, if you need me to call.
Okay, yeah.
I just want to make sure that.
You know, okay, uh, and I'm glad he brought that up. We did have a gentleman, uh, Mr. Williams, and I, uh, Mr. Williams brought to my attention. Uh, uh, Mr. Williams brought to my attention, I went out and looked at a cover that a gentleman had a concern about. And I, I told him I would bring it to the board, and I'm glad you brought, said something. The cover is off the road. Uh, county water does go through there, but the bylaw that I've read, we can't help him on that. It's covered for their purpose, our water goes through that, but everything I've read, we, we can't help it.
This isn't a, this is not the Cal, the closed road area we're talking about, it's a different one?
No, this is a different, this is a cover that they have, they use a little road near their lake.
Private road.
It's a private road.
I got you.
The water goes off the main road through that cover, but it doesn't, you know, it's gonna go that way anyway. And by laws I read, the county can't enter and do work to replace that cover. And I just wanted to bring that to your attention, but, you know, and if you want to get an attorney general's opinion on it.
I don't need one, we can go on private road, however, the, there's another one out there that you and I need to get on.
Okay.
To, to make certain.
Yeah.
It's okay.
Provide the labor, provide the labor, and they provide the company. We do that all the time.
Yeah, it's, it's certainly a watershed dilemma. Certainly a watershed dilemma.
It's a watershed problem, so the water has nowhere to go. I have.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna give you these names and numbers, I got a, one quick one. One cover is, uh, Brian Price on Gray Road. Okay, got you, got it, second.
Okay, all right.
Brian, right, second home.
It's been, um, motion by supervisor carver, seven times six, truck, train, or cover on Brian Price on, on what road?
Gray.
On Gray Road, all over the Baker. Passes four.
Also, before I go ahead and leave, I want to count, I got a few more. I got, the second one is, uh, Mr. Lynn Ogleman, two one five Kitty Lane. Two one five K I T T Y Lane.
Second.
We, uh, got a motion by supervisor carver, seven times supervisor train, or cover on, on two one five Kitty Lane. All, all over the Baker. Passes four.
Well, I see a lot of calls about, we've got all these brick ads sitting out on the New Light Road. In a month, you know, the timeline.
Well, we, we, I'm gonna try to work this on this construction, that's gonna be a project that's gonna take us at least a week, week and a half to get done. Yeah, because we gotta pad the road out, get everything smoothed up in the bottom, and it takes a little while to settle. So I want to get this paving done, because that's.
That's a wet project.
Yeah, and that's gonna be more of a late fall project.
That's fine, I just, let me know, you know, there, there are ways, Ingress, Egress, they can get out, but they just need that.
Yeah.
Uh, Siff Creek, there'll be cross drains and proper, you know, the one that.
Yeah, we got that one, that, yeah, that one's gonna be next, we, county line road first, and then we're gonna move in to do that.
And I, before I do, I'll say that, uh, you guys are doing good work on the covers. You know, I've gone back and there's a few of them on the last week, and, uh, it looks good.
Yeah, I went out, and we talking about, uh, when I put that some, on, uh, road that we got back there, just bid, we got to put in a six of it.
Let some down.
Yeah, we, we got, we, I got the covers in place to replace that, that's probably gonna kill that. You just gotta get in there and get them in, so that's why I'm racing and trying to get these projects. Because I got five covers in the yard that I got to get in.
Right.
Uh, and they all big covers.
They're big covers, that's right.
So, but, uh, I've got covers in place to put in there on that, it's actually gonna be on Pike, across Pike Road. Uh, what had happened is that the luck, that cover is, is.
And that work is similar to the type of work we were doing on Cannon Road, with the Nova Soul, Yaw Road, with the Nova Soul, Yaw, remember back there, how long ago we approved? Project with the Nova Soul, but Nova Soul was able to do a project in, in Brooksville, and that project has been completed. It went really well, and they're looking at moving to Cannon Road here sometime this week. And just to kind of refresh your mind, uh, we got the product from Nova Soul, I think it's about fifty-five thousand. I got a bid, uh, from the same contractor who did it down in October County for about twenty-nine thousand for his certificate. What the county will be able to provide is the playground, of course, the uses of the mixing and shaping, and then, of course, paving the road, you know, if the schedule allows, either whenever it allows. And so that will free up Mr. Collins to what he won't have to do, anything other than be ready to pave it. Clay ground was right there at C shop, but I know you'll help get, get it there. And I think this, this project is gonna be really beneficial, they had some good results down in, uh, Brooksville. And I'll probably get the Nova Soul to come into a little presentation maybe at next meeting, to give you all the ins and outs and kind of talk to us about how that process went. Uh, heads up construction, uh, Mr. Wayne is, is very familiar with the gentleman with the heads up construction, the one that was contracted on the project. And everything looks, looks really good, and I really think it could be very beneficial to what we're doing in October County. Mr. Collins, we certainly appreciate your assistance over there.
So how does it compare in cost of any other traditional paving methods?
Oh. Well, if it, if it, excuse me, supervisor train, if the product does well, and, and it did so far, you know, it is, it just started, if the product does well, it's a little bit less expensive than saw and cement. Uh, and from what, you know, our truck went down and sprayed the primer on it, and from what my driver told me, it, it set up just as hard as, uh, saw and cement was on the, on the road. Uh, they did, he, they, he walked out while they was waiting to, they had to wait on this primer they used for a couple of hours to set, and then they moved on and put more down, but, uh, from that bid.
What do you need to wait, a year normally?
Yeah, about a year, and, and that should, that should tell us how, how the product's gonna do, and how well it's gonna do.
Other roads, you get bus traffic and school bus and.
Guard's traffic and garbage truck traffic.
Yeah.
This is dead end road, and of course, uh, well, any road that's dead end could be.
Turn around, good or bad, I don't know.
Well, it could be expensive, because you know, you got property down there as well. When these, when we're improving these roads, these communities grow. I mean, they, they grow, I mean, they're just, they're just a mix of.
Any, any road that's got garbage trucks on it, it will go, it'll, it'll be testing.
That's Cannon, dead end, and get the garbage truck.
And get the garbage, right, they have to the shop.
We need to go look at it after, uh, September twenty-sixth.
Vic, is this something, I, I guess my question is, you've mentioned, uh, where your head happened with.
He did the, he did the, the work, he did the grading and all that on it, so it's basically the same stuff that we are doing now. It's just, uh, it's just a matter of us getting, that we are doing now, it's just, uh, it's just a matter of us getting used to the, kind of catching on to how to dump in them now, and it, it, it's going, it's going real good.
I think that's one of the things that's critical in hiring and as an HR director, when you need, any, any department needs a specific job, you need to go down some of the jobs.
I'm gonna say this, when this man come in and shook my hand, I knew he was ready to go to work.
Somebody, I sent you to somebody else.
Oh, he come down looking for a job, and when you come in and you can tell by the seal of a man's hand, that he's ready to go to work. And he's been doing concrete work, and anybody that does concrete work, I got high respect.
You got somebody that will work, yeah. Well, have you considered crush and run for some of these short roads? How does that compare with saw and cement and, and nope, crush and run? That's amazing, that's amazing.
That's a quick thing, because I know they ready to get me out of here.
Yeah.
Crush and run, if, if, if it does pretty good, but now what will happen is, it will draw up the asphalt that you put on it. So you really got crime on top of you. So a crushing run will take that asphalt and take an inch, and then the rock that you put on top of it don't want to stick to it. Uh, so. Doing it, doing it on soil, yeah, doing it on soil is, 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 is gonna be better.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay.
Next up, we have our IT director, Carl Zinn.
Good morning, gentlemen.
He is coming to the board today for regulations to approve the purchase of network equipment for network segmentations.
Probably gonna leave you in the cold. Oh. Before I get started, I wanted to just say a quick. Acknowledgement of a good friend of the community, friend, friend of this family, they suffered a big loss at the weekend. I happen to be in the nine one one center from that call, came here and they're, they're close to us, we're a bit sick, and doing that together. Uh, last two weeks, been a little bit sick, and doing that together. Uh, last two weeks, been pretty rough, but we have, we've decided that I've operated, it's starting to fail prematurely before we got started. This will be the first action that I'm asking to take from the county. And what we did was, while I wanted to bring for you a core network plan of covers, everything comprehensive, there's just too much going on right now. Highly recommended practice, highly recommended practice coming down from cybersecurity, CSU, federal organizations, everybody that served that so far said, wow, that's a great plan. I'd like to say on the brand child oven, uh, somewhere, somewhere else, and said, that's a good plan. The impetus for a lot of this is in the black and white printout that I had just handed out, but I've got it in color up on the screen. A lot of what I'll be asking for over the next year, whether it's in terms of action or policy, is back ended not only by my experience outside of working for the county and the diversity of working elsewhere, but also at the federal level, we've got a lot of resources through cybersecurity, CSU, et cetera, at the federal level. And one of the things we took advantage of when it came in back in April twenty-third, we did an assessment where the director of homeland security for the state of Mississippi came in, and they laid out the questionnaire, and myself, Seth, Tim, Rurk came in and we answered questions for about, what, two hours, seven? And there were thirty-seven questions, and out of those, we were able to successfully answer one. That laid the baseline for, if I'm asking for something, it's not necessarily just my idea, but this is standard practice in twenty twenty-five across the industry. If we're trying to go from what we have, which is working unless something fails, but working, what does working really mean? Does it meet expectations? Does it meet the needs? Something goes wrong, what position of risk have we, do we find ourselves in that we didn't know about? And so this is really the baseline of a lot of what we're asking, and this public safety split, and what we're asking for today is really the first pillar of that, to try to support the three sixty-five project, and hopefully, it goes.
So basically, we flatten that work, if somebody hits in one department here, they go all department-wide, and you have some kind of layer to your system.
We are layering and tiering it all the way through, and we're actually separating administrative needs from public safety needs, as an additional layer. We need to flush it out, we need to flush it out, it's not really moving forward with the grant, that's one.
Yeah, the grant, we're not moving forward with the grant, yeah, we're waiting on the, uh, minimum, I think it is, to approve our grant. Uh, once we get approval, we'll bring that in for acceptance. We, we have to have this with, regardless of whether we can pay for it with a grant or not. If we, if we don't get the grant, we still gotta figure out how to do this, so.
Because my understanding is, if I'm not mistaken, that we've just been piecing apart and stuff together off of departments, nobody's on the site network, everybody's standing alone, and from a cybersecurity standpoint, it's a nightmare because nobody's projected under one blanket. So we need to move everybody in one home.
Or, in this case, two homes.
Well, yeah.
Public safety, private administrative. So most of that, so we have really high-end expensive equipment, that every time you want to touch it, they're on quarantine board. Then we have low-end equipment that you buy once and good luck, you're on your own, this fall, summer, and the middle, where the essential care, especially there's one degree. For that, and you can extend it, this particular company is really neat, you can actually extend that for the life of the equipment, and they don't put an end of life on it. In other words, they still have a put it out until the safety space is twenty-five years old, and they're still quarantining. And what they do is, as long as you keep remaining experiments up, then they will replace it with the same or better equipment layers available today for life. So that's, it comes with the basis, and then we'll be asking for.
Yes, ma'am, let me get all my. My pieces of pork out here, there you go.
Well, I, everybody, you be able to shoot it, was it?
You'll tag it out.
Nah, man, let me get this.
Nah, man, let me get these, hold them up, big.
We got too many, I bad to move, sir. I mean, we didn't even, I didn't get them all on the list.
We got the close enough, Mark.
Yes, ma'am. I hope that y'all had an opportunity to review your package, if you had, and this ought to go pretty quickly. I tried to give you all some pretty good information where we might be talking terribly long about some things that are pretty important. Yep, so item number one, we need to adopt neighbor drive as an NAD one-one rule.
Second.
I mean, the formal adopt nine-one-one, neighbor drive.
Item number two, recommended action for M dot title six, annual compliance certificate, certification.
Annual.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
I can't speak for being there, but...
Item number two, so every year we have to do a compliance certification and reviewing the checklist. This year, I've discovered that we're missing a couple of policies that allow me to answer yes to these questions, and that precludes the receipt of M dot money through state aid and that kind of business. So to make it get these policies passed, I will tell you that these policies are focused on the public. So the idea is, we don't discriminate in providing county services to the public. Now, we've got some additional policies in here later that focus internally on our employment practices. So these are two different policies, one working on the public and one working on them. So if I, if I got three actions I need to get approved separately. First of all, I need a board order designating the county administrator as official title six and ADA section five oh four court.
Motion by Senator Robert Williams, second by Senator Robert Trager for the approval of the regulated actions for M dot title.
Title six and ADA section five oh four court.
All those in favor? Pass the three, yeah.
Second item, I need to build these act compliance policy, which is administrative policy number zero-zero-six.
Motion by Senator Robert Trager, second by Senator Robert Harper, all of them in favor?
Third item is need to adopt the title six non-discrimination policy, which is admin policy zero-zero-eight.
Need that, second.
Moved by Senator Williams, second by Senator Trager, all of them, oh, in favor? These policies.
Yes, sir, we're adopting the federal standards so that we can get those federal forms, that's right. And so I'll fill out this checklist, getting back in, reporting the criteria, reporting the criteria that go along with reporting all these different types of incidences. The federal law has different standards for each case. So discrimination reporting requires one set of documents and timeline and harassment and other sets. So this is going to give us the authority from the board to begin fleshing out all of those processes.
Just been noted by Senator Trager, second by Senator Robert Williams for the adoption of that to the county, oh, I mean, the anti-arrestment, non-discrimination, and non-escalation policy. All those in favor? Four items.
Item number, documents framework, this is documents framework. This is a rewrite of our current safety policy, getting it a number, and getting it split out so that we can split the policy from the procedure as our governing documents framework requires.
Want to talk through on October County's safety policy?
Yes, sir.
Second.
All those in favor?
Same, getting on, getting agreed, but the same thing, card, you can, it's still federally legal. So somebody got a card and they got, I mean, they can say, of course, they can't be under the influence of working out, which is the way I'm reading this stuff, is county county employee didn't have it.
Which was finally all spoke, but you know.
Maybe you just need to just send your memo out to the man.
Are we ready for item number six, Super God? I don't want to overstep you there. All right, item number six on the agenda is presentation of the draft twenty twenty-five comprehensive plan. I emailed this to you. I did not, for the sake of killing trees and all of that, I did not include it in the package. I hope you've had an opportunity to review it. What we need to do is accept this draft and then approve the plan for, the remaining plan for implementation. So today, we want to accept the draft and set a public hearing for October the sixth. Prior to the public hearing, we're going to hold two public open houses, one on September the fourteenth and one on September the fifteenth. I still have yet, and before I lose access, before I lose access to you. I don't know what, we need them, I think we need two motions. I need a motion, I don't know what, we need them, I think we need two motions. I need a motion to accept the draft.
September fourteenth, eighteen, seventeen.
Associates, that's how they're wanting to approach it. They're going to be here for our meeting on the fifteenth to answer any questions that y'all might have about this thing, and they're going to do a public hearing on those two days while they're here. So I need a motion to accept the draft.
So.
All those in favor?
I need a motion to approve the implementation plan that involves the September fourteen, fifteenth open house and then the public notice and that kind of thing.
It's been noted by Senator Trager, second by Senator Robert Harper for the approval of the open houses of September fourteen, fifteen, and October six.
Next item on the agenda, and we have a representative from Butler Snow here to answer any questions that you may have regarding this item, is the required defection. I don't know if I'm saying that right or not, but the required defections of outstanding hospital bonds. If you've had an opportunity to read through this, we owe fifteen million, three hundred and sixty thousand dollars in bond debt on the hospital. We recently approved the purchase agreement with Baptist with the purchase of the hospital. We will enter into an agreement with a third-party fiduciary, and using proceeds from the sale of the hospital, we will pay off these bonds in effect. Now, the issue becomes, some of these bonds are not yet callable. So how do you pay off something which contractually you can't pay off early, right? And the way you do it is, you take money from the proceeds, you give it to a third-party fiduciary, they hold that money, and then when the bonds become callable, they pay them off. So they take our debt, they take our money. From all intents and purposes, we have paid off the bonds, we have satisfied it all through this legal agreement with them called the defections agreement. And then we get to take those bonds off of our books, and we don't have to account for them anymore, and that third party is wholly and totally liable to call them.
I just want, I just want to clear up something extra that I, that we're all on the same page, especially everybody watching, you know, out there. Even though we are saying that that is what we're going to do, we're going to pay, you know, pay the bonds off when, you know, when they're callable, and we're going to, you know, take them off our books. But we cannot take them off the tax rolls until the next year because we have, our sale has not closed.
We'll get, we'll, yeah, we'll get into that in much more detail during the public hearing for the budget. But the budget's got, the budget and the mileage rates have to be approved prior to the closing. So therefore, we will, we will still have the bonds on our books, and this deal could fall through. So we're going to have to...
This is just pre-planned.
That's right.
This is what we're doing, this is what we're setting in place.
This is a part of closure. And then October first, October second, whenever the closure takes place is when this execution will happen. So anything prior to that would be, we'd have to act as if we're going to have these bonds going forward, so.
I've been asking, you know, I think we're all feeling a lot of questions from the public if these hospital bonds are rolling off in hospitals, and we reduce that mileage. But those bonds, twenty thirteen, twenty eighteen, and twenty nineteen, have they done for a public referendum? I'm not sure, yes, and no, did the public vote on that they weren't for these bonds?
Well, one of them is, that's John, that's John obligation.
They're all, they're all John obligation. Were they, were they referendum associated in there?
You don't remember when they did the, uh...
Can't remember about that.
Back in, back in, uh, back, that before y'all got voted out, yeah, that before y'all got voted out.
It's twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, is that the date?
No, it was twenty sixteen when they had that vote.
Twenty thirteen, eighteen, and nineteen.
I think it was sixteen when they had that vote.
It was as early as thirteen, because I think the bond got refunded in.
Signed in KLA and all of them, you know, they had the whole.
Shit, I make a motion if we go ahead and go through this process of...
Yes, sir. So what we'll do, if y'all approve this defections agreement, then I'll get Marvell to sign it. We'll get ready for closing. Upon closing, we will execute this agreement, and the proceeds will be set aside and pay off this debt.
Who is the third party then?
He goes ahead and makes escrow, he's called, he goes ahead and makes payments on bonds, just like money.
But if something happens through the inventory, we still have the option to refund it?
Your lots, no, these are the ones, they're the fees.
Okay, lots of them.
Y'all are, y'all are, they're not y'all's. Bond holders look towards the escrow agent who paid the bond.
Don't have any requirement, we've been giving them money before.
And that's the, that's the whole reason for it, that's the whole reason for it. Where it says, if we pay them off, we turn them over to a third.
To, um, for a defection, um, for a defection of outstanding hospital bond.
You pronounce that way better than I do.
Yeah, I'm talking about the interest on the money that's set inside. Can I explain that right?
I asked you about who gets the letters off the blade of the whole.
So let me explain that right quick, I think this is important. So for instance, with the twenty nineteen bonds, you'll need about two million dollars to pay off those bonds. But what you're actually setting aside is one point six million dollars. So they've got these timed investments, escrow agent has a timed investment, like a CD, that will act.
Time value of money.
Thank you, sir, appreciate you coming.
Item number eight, participate, we have another settlement, and these things are coming fast and furious. Steve been getting checks right and left on community counseling. Our community counseling, I'll be coming to you guys in the future, hopefully in the next couple of months with an agreement with community counseling to start trying to put this money to use in battling opioid addiction in October Hall County and helping to, helping to get some treatment.
What are the restrictions on that?
You can only use it for the, uh, upstate, and I think the wrong word, the upstate addiction, opioid addiction.
I was just wondering, is community counseling always agency that can use it? It would be good if they use it true enough, because this is that type of work.
I'm willing to enter into an agreement with anybody that y'all think would benefit, you know, would be able to help folks. It doesn't have to be just community counseling, that's the one I've reached out to as of today.
Reach out to Prairie Opportunity, community action. But now my understanding were those funds were not restricted.
Initially, when the Attorney General, initially when the Attorney General pushed this thing out, and it was the smaller amount, the very first settlement, they stated that you could use it for anything. But what has then happened is, as we've entered into these additional settlements, every single settlement comes with a stipulation. So every single agreement, and there was a real small amount there in the beginning with, when the Attorney General was managing it, and that was essentially the push from the state. So the state push, I think you could use for anything. The subsequent agreements where the counties entering into these agreements rather than the state entering into the agreement, were him up to only using it to battle opioid addiction crisis. And you said Prairie Opportunity, I would say myself.
I'll say you kind of, kind of in a way.
We got a motion. We got a motion by Senator Robert Trager, second by Senator Robert Harper.
There's a...
That's right.
There's a...
That's right.
Yes, so I guess we're open for additional agency.
Open for any entity that y'all think would do, you know, a good service. Okay, um, did we, we got approval entering into this agreement, did we do that? Item number nine, list of invoices for approval. Before we just sign off on these, I would like to draw your attention specifically to the East October Hall Waste Water District. We have two invoices for them. One is the permanent incorporated for fifty thousand, eight hundred and forty-one dollars, and one is to Neil Schaefer. We also have an outstanding invoice of thirty-four thousand dollars that was approved pending some verification and looking at some things and talking with Neil Schaefer. We have Mr. Dwight Christop here today to answer any questions that you may have regarding these invoices. And they have a grant, a fifty-fifty match, we're providing the match. The state of Mississippi is then providing another fifty percent. If the money is not paid out to these vendors by East October Hall Waste Water District, then they won't be able to use those payments to apply for their grant, is my understanding of the situation.
And we're getting, oh, we're sending back our money from Neil Schaefer, we're paying invoices.
Receipts.
Were there invoices, we're paying them for how much?
So there's a question of whether the money will be paid out to them, is that...
That would be great, but when we did this, when we gave the money, was to make sure that, that the money went toward only for paying of the, of the construction, of the construction.
We can certainly ask, um...
I see a lot of buildings, uh, structure, and construction.
We can ask East October Hall Waste Water District to provide copies of the cleared checks. Would that be a prompt, uh, Christop?
Or you can just give us a quick update, I mean, for...
Yeah, certainly.
What's established, everything, to me, that would be sad fact.
Yeah, I would be happy to yield time for any questions. And Mr. Christop, come all this way, and thinks you have to quit from dividing deals.
Now, what, what, what kind of, what have we, what pipes have been put down? Has a lot, has the infrastructure been put in the ground?
Yes, there, there's a packet of...
It's in my email, is that correct?
Yeah, it was in the, it was three hundred and fifty-one page specification that I didn't print out. He rounded it, and then we had the paper prints, and we went in your office to talk about it.
office to talk about it.
Well, I understand that we want to use these funds appropriately, but if we don't use them, I believe they'll be returned back to the state.
We currently have three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in ARCA money obligated into this project. If we don't give them at least three hundred and fifty thousand dollars of that, then we will have to return those ARCA money.
Return.
Because we can't obligate anything else at this point.
They re-obligate to some project.
Now, Mr. Christoff is, is under an agreement, has an agreement with October Hall County to fund this at a total of seven hundred thousand dollars. Um, we're, we're gonna have to discuss that additional funding at some point, but right now, I'm just asking, say these deals under the ARCA funding is three hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Most of them are most of them approved of paying the debt.
Two forty, two eighty, you got one?
He's, he's contracted for seven hundred thousand.
I'm just making a point, I'm, I'm already got...
Yes, sir, that's right, and I'm gonna keep up with that. Um, I, I don't think, if he, if he continues like he's going, um, I, I think he's on track to, to spend three hundred and fifty, so we won't lose the ARCA money. Uh, the additional money, we'll see.
I don't know if he's gonna...
I can show you the agreements where October Hall County agreed.
I do, but I think maybe that that is not put in there for it, the group to pay the three fifty, to make the other one, the seventy, or seven hundred.
No, 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 seven hundred, seven hundred.
We'll go back to that tape.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, got a motion on the table by Superintendent Williams, second by Superintendent Trager, pay deals, for East October Hall Waste Water, for Harper and Neil Schaefer.
Yeah, all, we have a number of invoices, I just wanted to highlight those for you.
Just, just doing those now.
Yes, sir.
Listen.
And, and you should note that, that, uh, brother large invoice for Ring and James there.
Okay, so without all, the motions, any discussion, all those in favor?
I've got two actions that I need to take on credit cards. One of them may be lengthy, I hope it doesn't turn into a big suspicion. Um, number one, we need to pay the credit card.
Pay what, pay credit card.
Got, got a motion by Superintendent Trager, second by Superintendent Williams, pay credit card, all those in favor?
They've been...
For...
Couple of months ago, I came to you asking to open a new credit card account. Uh, I made contact with Cadence Bank in, in relation to your approval for us to have a new credit card account, requesting that we create this account and put a five thousand dollar credit limit on the account. The bank made an error in, in that, and they put, gave us a new card, but they did not give us a new account. And so the problem that we're experiencing is that new card eats into our credit limit on our existing card. Now, I got, uh, reason we've gotten, wanted to try and get the other card that's hitting for, uh, two thousand, roughly two thousand dollars a month, and I'm afraid we fixing to bust this credit limit wide open. And I don't need you guys stuck down in Oxford with these wholesale bills going crazy and not being able to pay them. So what I'm asking for is an increase in the credit limit from ten thousand to twenty-five thousand dollars for our current credit account, uh, with Cadence Bank. If y'all will approve that, then I will generate a letter to be signed by the president and as a board, and we can get that done prior to the Oxford conference.
Second.
And motion by Superintendent Harper, second by Superintendent Trager, um, to, um, break the credit card limit, all those in favor?
That would be a need to decrease the...
I would ask not, because I'd rather have more visibility than...
I like that.
Yeah. Um, we, we ran into a lot of issues down on the Bill of Coast this past year, uh, for the first time, I had credit card charges that were declining, and that was just normal travel, that didn't even...
Yeah, it was a good one, yeah.
We got all that worked through. Uh, the next item on my agenda is payroll changes, uh, in keeping with what we started at the last meeting, I'm simply providing you with the list of those changes, which includes everything that would have been on the original forms, just to save paper and time for you on the off [inaudible].
Motion to be approved.
But if the motion by Superintendent Trager, second by Superintendent Williams, to pay the, all those in favor?
Last item, uh, from me is, uh, well, it's actually not the last item, it's the last item only on my agenda. No, it's not. Um, I'm, I can't count. Item number twelve, let's just stick with that, is the, the claim document. You should have had a copy in your package.
Is the motion by Superintendent Williams, second by Superintendent Trager, to, uh, pay the, all those in favor?
Bear with me while I get this started. Who made the motion?
Williams.
Next item on the agenda is, um, and I did not have these ready at the time that your package were prepared. I worked, uh, through the weekend, finalizing the numbers on, uh, on this, shared these with y'all. This is the public notice for the, um, the budget here, and then I'd like to talk about some dates. Also included in that packet that I'm giving you is, uh, some summary reports based upon what's been done so far, um, but what I need is approval to publish the notice of public hearing, uh, for the county's budget. Uh, the plan is to, um... The plan is to, uh, pay, post these notices in the paper on the third and the tenth, and then we will hold the public hearing on, uh, the eleventh. Let's do that, I don't know if time runs a little bit before it can be a workshop. And then I would like to do a workshop on the fourth.
The time on the fourth?
Now, some of what I'm struggling with is Clyde mentioned that he got two bid openings, uh, ten, I think, and, and I kind of left the time up for this, this board to kind of help me figure out what time y'all wanted to do this.
The only thing, like, on September the eleventh, are they gonna approve the budget? Because I gotta have my stuff done to the audit and Department of Revenue, up twelve.
That's why we set it for the eleventh.
So that's gonna be the report?
That's right.
Can we do it on early, on the fourth?
Eight o'clock?
Eight o'clock?
And if we have to do the bid opening, um...
About eleven, eight o'clock thirty, that good deal?
The September eleventh, um, budget hearing...
I won't be in town on the eleventh, but I participate, I won't be in town on the eleventh, but I participate by...
Yes, sir, we'll make sure you have access.
Is that the regular, that's gonna be a lot?
That's just the regular meeting tonight, and I just put that on here so we'd all be able to see it together.
I'm asking questions. Just on this, it says the projected budget revenue is seventy million, and next year the proposal, proposal, over sixty million.
That's correct.
Is it, what's that difference?
The different, and, and of course, attached to what you got there is the comparisons for, to study up on, to get ready for our workshop, but, so we, we had bond money, right? And, and we had ARCA money, and those funds were included in the seventy million dollars. We subsequently spent some of that money down, so that those funds are not available to spend this current year.
Is there any claims you've been working with, budget, that required supplement the budget in, uh, last year and, and this year?
Um, I highlighted that information for you, and we'll be prepared to discuss that further on the fourth. Um, if we budget to spend more than the revenues that we've got coming in, then we have to supplement that budget with cash on hand, and we will have, uh, greater detailed discussions on that on the fourth. But I've tried to give you enough information where you can kind of get your head wrapped around the challenges and the decisions that you're gonna have to make on the fourth.
Is there anybody to do this without having tax increases, without...
I'm not planning on increasing taxes, we, we have, we have sufficient cash on hand. Um, so I don't see a need to increase cash, I just think this board needs to make the decisions with eyes wide open.
Because we're, we're spending more money than we're bringing in, is what, is what I'm saying.
We're certain, we're budgeting more money than we're bringing in.
So we're supplementing with cash, that means that that depletes our cash.
Now, budget's not actual, you know, let's be aware of that, budget is not actual, and I'm gonna be very curious for the current year end to close, and let me do a piece of work on the twenty twenty-five fiscal year and see what our spending, you know, looked like. I'm, I'm waiting on that to close before I'll provide you with a report. So budget is not actual, but the past three years, we budgeted to spend more money, more than the revenues we had to...
And I saw where, in here, where our millage has gone up a little bit, even with that millage increase, we're still...
The millage is going, we will discuss that in greater detail on the fourth, um, but the school district increased their millage for debt service. So you're gonna see a little bit of increase in the total county millage. Now, that's not an increase, uh, from the county, that's an increase from the school district.
How many mills is that?
It's a half, a little less than a half a mill, I think, due to the debt service request. So they'll be looking at ten point four, six mills, I believe it is.
Why did I think that that was capped, supposed to be capped at ten?
Uh, likely because I erroneously told you that. So let me straighten the record up right now, based on what I've been able to determine, the, the debt millage is not capped, because it, they have to do a referendum to get approval for debt that they issue. So if the public approves the referendum, then the public has approved the millage necessary to pay the debt. Subsequently, the fifty-five mills, which is their operating, is capped at fifty-five mills, and the school is currently, uh, levying fifty-five, requesting to levy fifty-five mills.
I don't know whether they're capped or not.
They are, I stay...
No, when, when they, when they instituted it, but anyway, that's...
But I, I, I think Orlando is correct, I think there's some kind of sense the schools, um, join, you know, uh, together county and city.
I think, I think what, I think what we may be confusing is...
Maybe that means debt service.
Is the debt, in other words, when you consolidate, there's a certain amount of time that you can issue debt without having to do a referendum.
And they did it, they got a...
That's, so I'm wondering if we're not conflating the two issues.
That, that's what I'm thinking about.
All right. Doesn't matter what the school board asks for on the debt service, that non-capable amount, we have to approve.
I don't think so.
Well, yeah, yeah.
I don't think so.
They, they, they have some, some guidance.
Our board attorney has stepped out, uh, at the very opportune moment, but I really need his help, especially given his assignments in legislature, I think he would be much more knowledgeable this time.
That's the one we need to really study.
What are policies? Be too much for the rate and taxes that are issued.
That's issued with the debt, that's up to, with the, with the, that's not a case.
I think they're gonna request a seven percent increase.
A four percent. I think, I think the number is four percent up to an maximum of fifty-five mills. And once they hit that ceiling of fifty-five mills, then that's where they operate.
I think that fifty-four, one nine?
No, they're at fifty-five mills on the operational side. So they're maxed out operationally from a debt service standpoint by new current understanding of debt services, there is no limit on the debt service.
A mill forty, seven, seven, ten, yeah.
But that doesn't make the...
What are we talking about? Oh, four, the mills came in this year at, um, four ninety-one, nine fifty-two is the value of a mill this year.
What's the value of school, man?
Four ninety-six, five sixty, I think.
Yeah, that's still one nine.
If you look on, if you look on your millage table, look right underneath each one, and it tells you how much the value of the mill is.
Four ninety-six, three fifty, special escrow, right?
That's right, well, so the special escrow uses the same in the schools.
Oh, it does?
Yes. And then obviously, the volunteer fire is, is much lower because it's only county properties that contribute to that, not the city.
Any decisions that OCA would be taken up next year?
Have to be, because we had close, no guarantees at least, no guarantees at all.
Yeah, he can blow up today. Um, Mike, we need to make a motion.
Oh, I see.
Okay, so, so...
The motion is the September, the fourth workshop, and the eleventh budget year.
Lieutenant Superintendent Trager, second by Superintendent Williams.
I will get that put in the paper, uh, to run tomorrow, and the eleventh, I think it is, um, the, did I let you carry that, or did I get it in there? Okay, um, I got the, my last item is a, a nice little tribute to a, a beautiful woman named Minnie Fox, and I would, as Rob provided this to me on Friday afternoon, um, I was not happy with him, um, oh, man.
He just have to, uh, go out and T.O.A.I.D.O.
I wonder if he got it off. I'll bring it Thursday, let's approve it, I'll bring it Thursday, when is Miss Minnie dinner? So we'll have it ready then, perfect, yeah.
I make a motion, we approve the resolution.
Good, good solution, thank you for saving.
I was like that, just then, by, by Superintendent Trager, second by, by Superintendent, um, little, um, the first, um, Miss Minnie Fox presentation.
Please tip on the table, give a tip. Please tip on the table, give a tip, so maybe we consider that once we go to the evening.
What'd he say, don't, don't show up in pain.
Don't show up in pain.
Don't show.
I don't make a move.
You got a lot of money to have.
He always wants to...
Probably taking shots last week, you remember? Taking shots last week, you remember?
I was giving you food, I was like, you need a candy.
You need this.
No, I, I only have a couple of things.
Do you know what to plan?
It's been, it's been, also by Superintendent Trager, second by Superintendent Williams, for, for the sleep metal, and, and did you want, all those...
And we messed up, let... And we messed up, let... Messed up, let... Get away from us. Yeah, I got... So the DUI grant has already been approved. The problem is it's got so many signature spots on it that we messed it up. So that's why he got them both back in here. The seat belt grant has not been approved by this board, is my understanding. Is that correct, Chief? Do we know which one which? Because the grant itself is called the Law Enforcement, Mississippi Highway Safety Law Enforcement Grant.
Yeah, Mississippi Office of Highway Safety, yes.
So what we're looking for is a motion to approve the Mississippi Office of Highway Safety Law Enforcement Grant.
We just passed it. We passed about them.
We passed it twice.
We did, but just...
You have an introduction. Right, yes, and it was in there.
Another thing is the Roadhouse Orders, thing that says in y'all practice, introduction of it, we're in the process of trying to change some things in the Roadhouse Orders due to some issues we've been having here recently with trail rides and other activities. We're trying to get everybody on the same page, bring everybody in, and nothing, no new guidelines, so we're trying to get everybody on the same page.
And this is a read ahead for you guys. At this point, we're still working with the board attorney to nail down, finalize it, but we put it in your packet to kind of give y'all an opportunity to pervert it before it comes up for a violation.
I want to say Miss Minnie Fox has been, this is not at all, you know, talking about terrorize, but Miss Minnie Fox, ever meant this applies, she's got to come in private.
Entertainment venue.
Right.
Entertainment venue.
People can have these small parties, we're looking at a hundred or less, they really don't have nobody's guidelines, it's like large events, when they invite, you know, people from all over the area to come in, and we can, and they got to have security with their arm or on, they have some guidelines, and also to make sure that the sheriff departments as well. There's a lot of types of these people, these properties, they'll charge the sublease, and these people, like last, I asked Mike about it on Friday, said it was a special, 1,000, 1,500 people out there, since it was bigger. And speaking of citizens, he said, "Well, I reached out, I told them two weeks ago to get over the sheriff department. The guy that showed up, he sent a security guard down to meet with us, to let somebody have an event on this Saturday," which caused problems and things like that because they want to be armed, but I understand they cannot be armed, so we're trying to fish all that out before the event occurs, let them know what we expect from the security, what we expect from the get-go.
I know, probably far, I think, you know, often times, you understand, and show, in our big administration office, y'all from a static perspective, got to have some kind of heads up. So it's going to be 500 hours, yeah, with y'all, plenty of time to know, and they can have armed security officers?
If they're licensed and bonded, but we ask for a couple of paperwork. Paperwork, state, they can be armed. So we also like to try to tell the neighbors, you know, because if we get too many, like, we're going to show them down, so we try to get them in the surrounding area so they have problems, they can call the venue, the host, and let them know, hey, the music is loud, because after the second, third call, we start trying to shut them down.
Now, people's skill that was comparable to that. So you really got, right now, we have concerns about, he mentioned similar for you, ala Mud Country, and I'm not for sure about Starway, Grace Way, I think Starway still fall up under these.
Yes, yes, he came in last year.
And let me see, these other venues out of the county, and safe man's Newberry Peace Home, they would have fallen under this too.
Yes, if...
And all these other little places.
So, Mark, what about this question? What about our, what do they call it, the...
Hill Home. Hill Home. It would fall under. Even some of these wedding venues.
Yes.
Because you have the tendency with these venues.
Yeah, I wouldn't have thought about it.
Have more people than they're able to... Well, now, that would be different.
You take it wide, it's a municipal.
This is just more or less entertainment venue.
Every time they have a wedding with over 100 people?
Well, they would be registered anyway. They would register there, and they would pay that annual fee per year. I'm sure they would structure their costs to the color of that, and what that does that puts the sheriff on notice of, because you never know, you know, what may happen. I mean, you know, you could have, you could potentially have a wedding.
Yeah, some sound, just every wedding venue, they pay $500 a year?
Right, yes.
Because that also lets y'all know that there is going to be an event and when it is, and, you know, they have to have, you know, patrol people out there. So, I mean, it's a good thing, just keep it, you know, keep law enforcement going.
Yes, it's not like they have to have... It's just like we want to know. For example, not break up anything negative, but blackjack, that happened going on, we had no idea that was going on. And also, if you look at the firearms that they could carry, you know, it's going to be handguns, no, 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 just long rocks or anything like that.
A lot of baseball games going on. Baseball game.
Baseball motion, unless you can't, it's motion.
No, I'm not talking about that. A lot of baseball out in the rural.
Okay, certainly. Those are normally small, if it's less than 100, it does not apply.
Yeah, it does.
Okay, well, yeah, no, if it's less than 100, so you have weddings.
And too, doesn't it have to be paid attendance?
Well, now, it doesn't say it here, but I mean, that would be another thing.
Like paperwork and paid attendance.
Who do you want to put on this Regulations Committee? It just says Key County Officials, Regulations Committee, opposed with Key County officials, including representatives from Sheriff's Department, will be responsible for the final decision on granting, denying, or revoking permits.
The way it was originally written is it had the county administrator and the fire coordinator. We kind of rub it a little bit, we revised it a little bit to make it a little more open, but the idea is the fire coordinator, because if they're doing it inside, we want to make sure we said, "I could sit in it," and then obviously somebody from the sheriff's department, and then the county administrator from an organizational standpoint, he just seems to be put on a lot of things.
Most of the time, most of the time, the property owner is not really the one that's putting on the event.
Right.
So who get the, who needs to get in that case?
Well, the property owner, they have a sheet that they fill out, they have to bring it back to the sheriff department, and we try to sit down and meet with the host and the security, and make sure we're all on the same page. That's what I'm saying about this one, they got ready out two weeks ago, the guy that showed up, he's in the security company, so we try to eliminate that. So we'll go ahead and get something in writing, so they're known from this point forward, if you plan on having an event, you need to get over the sheriff department, so we can go sit down and go with safety guidelines and things like that. You know, we got a big part out there in Mr. Williams' house, you know, hundreds of plus people might come in and check it out.
They need to get you out.
But so far this year, most everything that pays.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up, we got...
I've got a couple of things. The first thing I need is an approval for my rental agreement with Pitney Bowes.
Make a motion, we'll approve it.
We got a motion about Turner, and a second about Williams, all for the change of court to, or approval of rental agreement, all bets are taken?
Interesting. I see.
Posture to agree with getting a machine, you do that.
We have a monthly fee of $77 for the machine itself.
For the machine.
And then above the actual stamp money from the budget.
Yeah.
Keep up the time stamps.
You just pay, it's a reserve, you have that on, you just pay, put it on, then you have so much reserve, it keeps up with the matches, you know. A lot of offices have it, sometimes you got the key in, like a code, like of the person
With my accent, to, to, but, but, man, like that is very expensive. I don't know whether that machine is same with you posted.
Because when we didn't... I'll give you... Well, this is from the tax office, this is on the tax office, with, uh, Use Hernandez, Use Hernandez, this is, so Rob, Williams, you got anything? And I'll have you play one of them.
I just want to make sure I spread on the minutes, and I think I referred just earlier to the Cannon Road project, I wanted to, we improved, move forward on that project with my, with the team, with the Nova Soul and the head of construction, and the plan of it is, is that where the budget for Cannon Road is going to be up to $200,000, and when I say the budget, that's going to be material, but all the material and everything provided in the camp. We got the cost of the Nova Soul service of $55,000, cost of the service of head up construction, $29,000, and the other head up construction, $29,000, and the other costs are going to be material costs, it's going to be playground, chip seal, CRS2, all the rest that we provide in the camp.
And now, what budget is we...
This is going to come out of bond. Make a motion.
We got a motion from, to try to, to proceed with the Cannon Road project, with all the funds coming out of...
This too.
All bets are taken? Pass this for him. Anybody else have anything?
Make a motion, we stand, we stand, we said, brother, Thursday at 8:00?
Yes.
Thursday, Thursday, September 4th, 8:00 a.m. Is that right?
We just made a section. We've got a chairman, so it's been, uh, both, uh, trying to set, uh, do some of that with, to set a chairman until Thursday, uh, at 8:00 a.m.
Yeah, I think we're good.
All bets are taken?